Six thirty-five on November sixth, two thousand seventeen, and we will call the school committee meeting to order. We are a little short-staffed today. Two of our members cannot join us tonight for health reasons. I guess that's the season. We have some guests, and we have a somewhat full agenda today. So we're gonna start with the approval of the minutes from October twenty-third, two thousand seventeen. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
You were both here for that meeting, right?
Yep.
Okay. Cool. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from October twenty-third?
Uh, with one change. Deanne was not absent that day, and she's marked as absent. She was late, but she wasn't absent.
Okay. Well, if you come late, we just, we don't give you credit for it.
Seeing as there's a vote later down, you know.
Okay, thank you. That's a good catch. Yep. All right, so there is an amendment to... Kathy, did you catch that?
No, I didn't do it.
Uh, Deanne was here that, for that meeting, October twenty-third. She arrived a little late, but she was here. Other than that, do you have a second?
Yeah, I have a second, too.
Okay. Any more changes, comments? Okay, all in favor to approve the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Just a quick note on that, but we're gonna do that combined voting at the beginning of...
Yes.
Maybe we can consider that, um, I don't know, starting December, January, whenever we want to...
Consent agenda.
Consent, yeah, exactly, consent agenda. Do we have any visitors that would like to speak today, aside from you guys? No? Okay. So maybe we should, let's start republificizing our visitors' comment section. We have not had a lot of comments lately. All right, going to new business, approval of private schools for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Tonight, we have Children's First Enterprise with us. It kinda felt weird to call it enterprise, but you guys wanna come and join us?
I want to first. Sure.
You want us up here?
Uh, why don't you come here? She's, she's not feeling well either, and she won't be here.
Okay. Let's see what's in there.
Okay.
So you, tell me how you want this to go, 'cause I'm new to this.
Well, um, there's really no rule around this. We first wanna hear what you have to share with us. Maybe give some information about Children's First for those folks who may not know about new school.
Sure. Children First is a nonprofit center licensed by the Department of Early Education and Care, and we recently expanded our facility over at Pleasant Street and added what we're now calling the West Wing. And we offer care now for children from toddler through to technically seventh grade.
Who takes the presidential wing?
Uh, that'd be me. We call it the administrative wing. So we have the east wing, the west wing, and the administrative wing. Um, but the administrative wing is very small. It was the original preschool, um, that I know where he remembers. And, um, we built on originally in two thousand and ten and expanded our preschool capacity at that time. Um, and then we've just this summer completed another expansion, which allowed us to add a small toddler program, uh, to add a third preschool classroom, and to build dedicated school age space. So previously, we had been using the cafeteria at the West Street School, um, and this allowed us to consolidate onto one campus. We designed the building to support STEAM education, so we have a science, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. Um, so there's a science room, a technology chill pod, kind of a sensory support space, an engineering pod, and an art pod. So math didn't get its own pod, but is spread throughout all the others. And those flower off of a common room, also with nooks, which are places for kids to have snack and lunch, do homework, play board games. Um, we've got a big porch off the back and about four, over four acres of natural playground space. So, um, this allowed us to really, um, kinda consolidate everything on one campus, giving that program more support, more connectivity to, um, kind of main base. Um, and, uh, so with this incredible space that was available between eight and three, uh, parents had been asking for a kindergarten program. So we kinda put out feelers, and we talked to folks in the community, and, um, we were able to get a small program, which is all we really want. We have seven children. Three are Granby residents, two are Belcher Town residents, one is a South Hadley resident, and one is a Holyoke resident. And so, uh, in terms of the prerequisite, they have to be age-eligible in their home community. Um, they need to have attended Children First preschool, so it's not something we're throwing a wide net for. It's a very individual, small program, and this is Erica Pease, who is our teacher. Um, and, uh, our overall goal is to be outdoors fifty percent of the time. And so they're doing a lot of their learning outside, and they're doing, um, very heavy focus on social-emotional learning and approaches to play and learning. Um, and we're really seeing a lot of, um, strong problem-solving and collaborative play coming out of this, you know, first couple months with this small group.
So, Donna, um, I apologize, I didn't even ask you to introduce yourself.
Donna Denat, Children First Executive Director.
Um, how, how big is the school in terms of students? And since you gave us a delineation between all those different towns, how many students do you have from Granby who are Granby children?
In our preschool?
You know, overall, in your school?
Uh, well, so our, we have a hundred and twenty-one slots, which can be shared between children. So somebody comes Monday, Wednesday, Friday, is, uh, you know, shares with a Tuesday, Thursday, that's one slot, two children. So, um, we currently have seven kindergartners, we have nine toddlers, we have eighty-three curate, preschoolers, and overall, do you have your school age total number?
It's like ninety.
Ninety total individual, you know, kids for, for, uh, school age. So our school age program, all of those children, uh, for before and after-school half-days, those will all be Granby school participants. They might not all be Granby residents, because school-choice children typically need before, after-school care, half-day care, so, um, but I would say the, the bulk of our schoolagers are Granby residents. Our preschoolers, we tend to be about, uh, forty percent Granby, forty percent South Hadley, twenty percent, if my math just added up, uh, various communities.
Oh, probably have more questions on that, on that side, but, uh, thank you, that helps a lot. I don't wanna, uh, bond the conversations with anybody else.
My, my question.
Yeah.
And I really like the concept. Um, you said fifty percent outdoors.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how would, how would that match up? Do we, do we worry about when they're, when, they may be, they may be moving from, from your Children's First into the first-grade programs? Is that gonna be a problem? 'Cause I know, having discussions with people from, I guess, the Hartsfield School...
Hartbrook.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that school, there's a, they say that the, this, this, those, those kids there, that by fourth grade, they're probably a year or two behind, but if they stay up until the end of the school program, they're actually ahead of all the other students.
Hmm.
So I was, I was just kinda curious if we, if we got...
Based on learning or outdoor time?
Uh, based on learning. Like, if they were to take the same testing and the same classes, they might not have the academics the same, but they've, they've been busy doing other types of things, like outdoor, team-building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but then, once they get past that point, they've, they've surpassed the rest of the, the schools. If I'm not saying that correctly, I apologize.
Hmm, but all the research that we're seeing is that increased, um, timeout nature is actually supporting the learning process. Um, and we did have our, um, program reviewed by a master teacher who's a kindergarten in the public, public school system, um, who felt like our children were not only on track, but ahead of where the other children are right now, partly because you've got one teacher with seven kids. You know, that's another piece of it. So, and these kids have been together for at least a year or more. So the group formation piece has already happened. Um, you know, they already know how to line up and to roll call and, and be in circle time. They already know all that from the Children First program. So, you know, we had been hearing a lot about how well-prepared our kindergartners were going into the kindergarten program. And so, um, we use the Teaching Strategies Assessment System, which used to be a birth-through-kindergarten program, and they've just upgraded it. It's now a birth-through-third-grade system. So it takes, um, it takes the objectives, aligns them with Mass Common Core, and so it's all aligned. And then it shows you the spectrum of, um, where a child should be to meet certain benchmarks. And, um, so most of our children who are finishing up their final preschool year with us are already, at least fifty percent, in the, in the purple bar, which is the kindergarten benchmarks. So we're able to make sure that our kids are progressing, because we're able to assess them with this tool three times a year and make sure that they're moving along either with or ahead of their peers.
Okay, and I apologize for...
Yeah, no, that's fine. It's a great question.
It's a good question, and I asked Donna that when we met.
Yes, yeah.
What was the assessment system they were using? Because we're also using, uh, the TS Gold. So, um, it was a natural fit, um, so that as we talk about how students transition, whether they're preschoolers coming into kindergarten or kindergartners coming into first grade, we will have those conversations about strengths, areas of opportunity for growth, um, what we can capitalize on with the students as they transition, so that we can make sure that the transition is very smooth for the students.
One of the things that we're most passionate about is it has a very strong social-emotional component. And as we know from the research that's happening right now, the most important thing that should be happening in the foundational years is strengthening social-emotional learning. And so it gives us an assessment tool that, starting this year, we'll have children that will assess as early as twenty-one months with this same tool all the way through however long they're with us. And so it's the social-emotional component that I really love the most, and I love the graphs that really show where a child belongs, um, in terms of the benchmarks, the, you know, and it's a progression. Um, and it shows each child where they are each time you assess them, so that you can see a child, for instance, who's not making progress. Um, and so we're able to know what a child's, um, strengths are and what areas we need to work on. You know, Erica was able to individualize for these seven children during their final preschool year, because she knew the group that was coming into her. That's really valuable. It lets her be ahead of the game as well. And we share with, obviously with full written permission, we share reports, particularly with Granby. Uh, we've always delivered all of our TS reports to, um, to Gail and, uh, making sure that your kindergarten has everything that we have, so that teachers have as much information to start with as possible.
Interesting to know, actually, since you gave that example from, um, Hartsburg, um, I wonder what the factors are that may be leading to them eventually being ahead of, uh...
Yeah, I can, I can get more information on it. That's just based off of a conversation I had with my wife, who had a conversation with those people at that school, which is definitely a client of mine.
But we could do some, similar things. Um, although, social-emotional learning is, has become an important part of how we look at our education as well, uh, in this district, it would be interesting to know whether or not some of the things that you guys are doing actually carry through, and those students have, uh, some things, uh, that help them to be ahead of their peers emotionally, socially, and academically. That would be an interesting example. Um, the other thing that I'm, I'm curious about, since you mentioned that about thirty, thirty-five of your students every year are from Granby, and eventually they're gonna be hopefully coming to our school district. Do we have, and you guys might have already discussed this, but do we have that connection, like TS, uh, to understand, um, what is the best way for them to integrate into this district?
We do, and we've done that for years. So, uh, we meet with, uh, and I'd say that the, we have the closest relationship with Granby, naturally. Um, and so we kinda review the children, again, with full parental permission. We review the children who are coming in. Sometimes there's a pair who, separate, they do really well, but together, it can be kind of disastrous. And so we share whatever information we can to help those children be most successful when they start. Uh, we have really developed, um, kind of a, a secondary but strong relationship with South Hadley on the same, uh, topic, and we're just beginning to really work with, with Belcher Town and getting a relationship with Belcher Town.
Hopefully we're not the disastrous pair, so...
Right.
Anything else? Erica, did you have anything for us?
Uh, no, just what Donna was saying, and, you know, just about the balance of what the Common Core standards are with, um, the unstructured outside playtime is really important for them, so...
I do really wanna, uh, cover the next couple years.
Track it.
Track the, the outdoor playtime, you know, structures that you're using versus what we do here, and see, and see how it works.
Kind of anecdotally, what we're noticing is, is most dramatic in what we're seeing with these kids is the collaborative, um, the collaborative problem-solving. It's really, like, mind-blowing to, to listen to what they're doing and to watch them.
And the perspective, you know, taking each other's perspectives and the empathy that they're building for each other, and it's just so important for them to be developing those skills that when they get older, like...
And strong leadership skills, because in a, in a classroom of seven, there's nowhere to hide. You know, you really have to be part, an active part of that group. So it's exciting to watch.
Is it also how you set up your classrooms? Is it, is it a factor, or is it, does it look like a traditional...
It does not look like a traditional classroom. Um, there is a space that, um, is growing to look a little bit more like a traditional classroom.
Yeah, our kindergarten nook.
Yeah, um, so it has, um, well, you taught, you described it.
Yeah, it has, um, like our sight word wall, that, all the sight words that we learn, I put them up there, and so when we're writing sentences, they can refer to that. Um, the numbers, the shapes, uh, the letters, so anything that they need to refer to when we're doing instruction, they can just look right up at the wall where we're working, so...
What was the thing that I, I keep on bumping into? The flex space, or whatever they call them, with beanie bag, beanie bags?
Flexible seating?
Yeah.
You use that in your classroom, right? Flexible seating? Yeah.
But it's not everywhere that you guys have that. It's in some classrooms you have it, and some others you may not have that type of...
Correct. I, I work outside the district, but, um, flexible seating can be done in any classroom. Um, you can have traditional seating, flexible seating in another section, you know. You would see it everywhere.
I think you'd be surprised at kindergarten in Granby, um, how the classrooms are arranged. They don't look like traditional classrooms. They are centered-based.
Center-based.
Um, with circle time and, um, lots of spaces for students to explore, um, physical learning, whether it's the sand table, the rice table, the water table, and that center will be in constant change as students learn and grow, um, around science, uh, science concepts. The, um, small group table, where the teacher is working on basic literacy with small groups of children on a rotating basis, um, every day. Um, the imaginative play station or center. But I agree, one of the goals I do have is, is to have us, as we open the new school, consider how we can encourage more outside. Um, I know Hatfield also has a wonderful kindergarten program.
They do, yeah.
And I would like to see us reach out and investigate that for our students. Um, one of the research findings is that it helps students center, stay focused, and be more present for academic time when they're balanced with, uh, the nature's play, the collaborative problem-solving, and you're not even teaching it, they're just doing it. You're more observing it and encouraging and coaching and, you know, in a very Montessori-esque approach, really, um, to encourage students that are doing good work, to encourage them more, and to identify that with positive reinforcement. So, um, I'm excited that, uh, Children's First is, um, moving in that direction and has established that, and, uh, we would like to, to come over for a visit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't wait to show you the new, new things.
Cool.
Can, can you speak a little bit about, if you have students that, um, pop up on the radar screen, may need more services? I'm thinking about five oh-four students or IEP students, what that process might be for our families and how we collaborate?
Right. So, um, because we're only accepting children who have already attended with us, uh, we have typically kinda scoped those things out prior to the kindergarten year. And, um, you know, part of what we're offering here is something that, you know, we make it clear, we don't have specialists, but that we work with collaboratively with the school, local school systems. Um, and we can have, for instance, we welcome, um, providers to come into our center. So we have, for our toddlers right now, we've got the May Institute coming in and doing speech therapy, uh, with a couple of our toddlers. And, um, we have some, in preschool, some kids go, you know, either to the school or to private practice to support those things. So with TS, you'd, you've, you've kind of identified those things very early on, which is one of the strengths of that assessment system. And part of what happens around planning on kindergarten is what, what's the best placement for the child? So it has to be an agreed upon that this type of program is gonna be to the child's best interest. So it may be on our end where we say, "So here's what we're seeing in our assessment, and we're not gonna be able to provide for this." Like, we don't, we can't provide speech services. Um, this is what we can offer, this is what we can't offer, this is what we think your child needs. Um, how, how do you wanna approach that? And so we take a collaborative approach with the parent as we call attention to whatever the concerns may be, and just kind of lay it right out there. This is what we can do, and this is what we can't do. What do we wanna do together? And so this, this isn't the best placement. We need to be in the school system to be accessing services. Um, and sometimes it's, uh, some combination thereof, where we're gonna do private, you know, out, out of their own insurance and get something privately to support while they also attend. Or it may be that, you know, the, they've taken the child, we have, we have one child that we have some speech concerns, um, and we've recommended in our TS every report, we think that there's still some speech concerns here. Um, so the parent, uh, took the child to their community and had that child evaluated, and the parent felt that it was not, uh, severe enough to do anything else with at this time. So the parent chose a watchful, waiting response at this time. So, but it's all documented as we go through the TS system. Yeah.
Yes? All right? All right? Well, before we go on, uh, vote, let me just, uh, wrap it up by thanking you guys. We always consider Altrulum's First as part of our community, and...
We're partners.
It's great to, exactly. It's great to see that as a partnership, as a collaboration.
Thank you.
It's good to have you.
Thank you.
Um, so what we're gonna do, we're gonna vote to approve, um, Children, uh, Children's First for, is it Children First or Children's?
Children. It comes from the expression, "We put children first."
Okay. All right. That, that, actually, that's more sense than my "Children's First." Um, we're gonna approve, uh, we're gonna vote to approve Children, Children First for the school year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Is there a motion?
For kindergarten.
For kindergarten.
I'll make them. Got it? Mike can make it. Second.
Okay. I wonder why nobody else is second in these things, but, uh, so, uh, is there any other discussion, any questions? Okay. All in favor to approve, please say aye. Aye? Thank you guys very much for coming.
Thank you. I hope you will not be offended if we skip out.
Not at all.
I'm functioning on, I'm functioning on less than four hours of sleep.
Oh.
We came in, I came in late. I was at a conference in San Antonio and came in after one in the morning, and, uh, so it's been a long day.
We could help you with your sleep, actually, so...
Yeah. You know, there's a thought. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we take Crystal out of order if that was, if the, if the committee would...
Of course they crystal out of order.
Crystal just, um, and she, it didn't make the, uh, agenda formally, because she has an update on the senior trip.
Okay.
And just wants to update the committee. Um, so, you're on, Crystal.
She's wearing her, uh, class of two thousand eighteen.
I didn't order one. Are there any extras?
Uh, we're gonna do a second round, 'cause the, uh, kids didn't know how the hoodies were gonna look, so they didn't wanna spend the money, but now that they saw, they love it, and they wanna do another round of orders. So we'll do another round of orders. Um, but originally, when I had come with the senior trip, um, we had, um, all came to the decision that we would want half of the students going. So I just wanted to give you an update before I give a deposit to Woodlock, um, whether or not, you know, we have half. So currently with, um, students that have dropped out or, um, unenrolled in Granby, we have, uh, fifty-eight in the class. Um, so in order to have half of that go, we would have, um, currently, I should say, we have twenty-five to twenty-six going, one still trying to find out if they can come up with the money for the deposit. So, um, half would be thirty-three. So, or I should say thirty-three is not going, and twenty-five, um, for sure is going, possibly twenty-six. Um, we are doing a fundraiser to, which is a monthly raffle calendar that the class, um, officers went around to the different local businesses, got gift cards, got money. Um, so nothing is coming out of the senior account to run that, um, fundraiser. It was all, they did a great job. They went around, filled up the month of January for the calendar. Um, so we are also gonna run that to help bring down the cost of the senior trip. So we're looking at a cost of three hundred and fifty per student. Um, that's bus there, bus back. It's a four-and-a-half-hour drive, so that's a big bus bill. Um, that's also going to be, um, Friday night and Saturday night, all activities, all food. Um, they get a meal on Friday night, so we would eat lunch here, leave at twelve-thirty, um, to go on the bus, get there, um, around five, five-thirty, depending on traffic. They would eat dinner, get settled, um, then they have night activities, and they have the whole day Saturday, and they have most of the day on Sunday. Um, we leave on Sunday at one. Um, so we'd be, we would be back here by seven the latest. So that's two nights accommodation with all activities and food for the, um, two-and-a-half days. So, and bus fare there and back, because we can't, you know, a couple of students are like, "Oh, well, I wanna drive." Well, that's not an option. You either come with us, or you don't come at all. Um, so, that's my update for you, so I don't know how you want me to proceed. I know that the students that did sign up really wanna go. Um, I know there are some kids that are still on the fence as to whether or not they can afford it, which is why we came up with the monthly raffle, because basically whatever these kids sell comes off their cost. We're not gonna put it in the account. We have enough in the account for senior activities. So currently, we have a little over thirteen thousand in the, in their account, I should say they have, in their account for senior activities. So that will pay for graduation, that will pay for High Meadows, that will, possibly they could even get part of their yearbook cost reimbursed to them. So, um, Mr. Sullivan and I decided, or he kinda decided and let me know, that he doesn't want more than a thousand dollars in the account when they graduate. So if there is extra money, it gets divvied up between the members, and we give them, we cut them all a check, basically, um, because there's been issues with large amounts of money being stuck in there for years. Um, we don't want more than a thousand in there. So, um, we're hoping that with this fundraiser, a lot more students are gonna be looking to go. So I am in contact with, uh, Woodlock to find out how they wanna proceed from here. So we have a definite of twenty-five, so they're gonna write up a contract for me. They haven't emailed it to me yet, uh, but they're gonna write up a contract and let me know what the deposit would look like as far as the amount of money. So, um, yeah, so basically, I'm just looking for a direction as far as to whether or not you guys want me to proceed, or how you guys want me to deal with it, 'cause we did say half last year.
Yeah.
So we're a little under half. So what does that mean?
So when you mentioned those who are on the fence...
Yep.
Are they part of that twenty-five, twenty-six group?
Nope.
So we still have some opportunity to be able to help other students who, for financial reasons, currently may not think that they can make it.
Right.
We have an opportunity to pull them into this group?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's all, I mean, I, I guess our, the reason why we say at least half, and even half sometimes, you know, breaks my heart to say half, because the other half cannot go to their senior trip, is so that they can share something together, uh, from their senior year. But the truth is that I don't know that, uh, even the best year, we had a huge percentage of students go for financial reasons, for other reasons, personal reasons, they did not, uh, go. And we always ask whether there was a way to mitigate the cost so that the number could increase. Looks like you're looking into that anyway.
Yeah. The next two fundraisers, so they're allowed two to three fundraisers a year. I mean, it's not a set number, but, um, that is something that we try to stand by, because because there's so many grades that are due in fundraisers. So they already did one, which was a Krispy Kreme donut. Um, they made a little over seventeen hundred on the Krispy Kreme donuts. Um, this next one is going to be just to take down the cost for the yearbook and to take down the cost for their senior trip. Senior trip first and then yearbook second. Um, and then the last one that they want to do is gonna be like personalized mugs and stuff like that towards the spring because a lot of parents are, and a lot of people are looking for gifts to give for graduation. So they have a magazine they have picked out that's a fifty percent profit. Um, but the raffle calendar is a hundred percent profit. You can't get better than that.
Yeah.
So um we're asking that all students sell five of those raffle. So it'd be fifty dollars in at least five, but the more they sell, the more that comes off of their senior trip. So if they say, okay, I only have two hundred, so okay, then you have to sell fifteen in order to get a hundred and fifty dollars off of your senior trip. They have the option to sell thirty-five and get the whole trip for free. That is their option, but they have to be the ones who go out and sell it.
Yeah.
So. Yep.
Um, one uh more question. You mentioned that the other year we don't want a cer- more than a certain amount.
A surplus of money, yep.
Right. I, we, I know that every year uh senior class has a gift for, from their class to the school.
Yep.
Do they do additional fundraising for that?
Nope.
I'm wondering whether, you know, they would, if they have so much money left, part of it, they can say, you know what, instead of going and fundraising again, we can maybe use part of it for them. You guys probably thought of that.
So it's whatever's in their account, whatever they decide to give for a senior gift comes out of their account. We don't do an additional fundraiser to
Oh, it does already, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we don't give an additional one. Um, I know they have ideas come, um, you know, we sent, I sent an email out to the teachers asking what different things, you know, do they want? One was landscaping outside. Um, I don't know, there was just like miscellaneous things like painting the doorways royal blue instead of the sea blue green. You know, just little things like that and none of that stood out to the officers. So they don't know what they want to do yet, but that does come out of their, their thirteen thousand that they have. And they delegate how much they want to come out of it. So um I think last year, I think it was four hundred dollars, the seniors decided to give four hundred dollars per department and to use it on supplies or whatever they needed for their department. So I think English got books, math got calculators. We're still waiting for ours at the science department. I don't know if it's coming. But like they, so they can delegate what, based on what they have left. So it's not like they say, okay, you know, we're gonna put two thousand away for a gift. Now we have to fundraise to pay for senior activities. It's whatever's left and whatever they can give. Yeah, so that's typically how they do the um, the class gift.
They're, they're, I mean, they're active to be able to raise those funds, so it's
Yeah. Yeah, they've worked really hard over these last four years. We've done a lot of community builders. Um, they were really disappointed when the bonfire fell through
Yeah.
um with the specific group that we were supposed to do it with. But, you know, I just, I was honest with them. I said, guys, you know, you, you guys have done a community builder at least twice a year for four years. For once be selfish, you know, you need money this year. This is your senior year. Like it was way too much overhead with a band, a fire, the building usage, the police officer. They would have, they would have maybe made five hundred dollars, you know? So it was a lot to ask a senior class to pick up. I said, I'll support you with anything you do, but I'm just letting you know, you're not gonna make the thousand dollars that you want. Like it's just, it's not gonna, I can't guarantee it's gonna happen if you, if you have all that overhead and nothing coming in. So um they, that's why they decided on the Krispy Kreme and good thing they did because they made, you know, close to seventeen hundred or a little over that on the fundraiser. So um, yeah, so I think they deserve it.
How do you guys feel about um us not having yet half of the students?
It seemed like it was very close to half.
It is.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
It looks like they're working to, I'm, I'm hopeful that it's gonna be more than half anyway.
Yeah, I think the parents are just a little anxious, especially the, the ones that can't afford it. So even though the fifty dollar deposit was due, it's not like written in stone. If they can raise that money, um, you know, for the raffle prizes, then they can come. You know, it's something I have to work out with Woodlock and see if they, if there's a certain amount of slots that they'll hold for us or like put in limbo, so maybe we'll get another ten more and they can hold those ten slots until I have a final number without charging us for it. Um, so I'm still working with them to see what that number would look like. Um, but it doesn't look like they're booked for that weekend, so it would be May fourth, fifth and sixth. So at this time, they're not booked, which is a good thing. And it's a resort, so um the students cannot leave the resort, which is really good. So they have to stay in the, in the area. Um, and then according to the rules, I think in Granby, it's one's um, one supervisor per ten students. So we are also looking into what does that look like for Woodlock? Because last year they told Ms. O'Golly or Kathleen O'Golly that for every ten students, one went for free. Wasn't in the contract. So I'm just trying to make sure that that is also, because otherwise that's another additional expense that we weren't anticipating.
Yeah.
So that is something that we're also looking into too. And if it is indeed what they're gonna follow, then I want to see it in the contract so that they honor it.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, so.
All right.
No, I'm absolutely fine. I mean, I hope you get more, but.
Yeah, I hope so too. I think um there's three of them that want to really go. They're gonna try their best to, they're gonna sell the raffle, um, the raffle calendars and hope that it pays their way, is what they're looking at. Like one of them, I mean, she pays the bills at home. She helps her parents, so her money can't go towards the class trip. She literally said to me, I have to pay the cable bill today, otherwise they're gonna shut it off and stuff like that. So they're trying, but they just, they need more time. So I'm hoping Woodlock will work with us on that.
Yeah.
I just think I'd be more concerned if there wasn't the opportunities to fundraise to offset some costs for the students. That, that would be much
I agree.
Yeah.
Yep. And what is a trip again?
May fourth, fifth and sixth.
Okay, so we have some time to really uh check where we are in terms of financing. Maybe we can find, if you believe that, you know, we had ten students who were this close to
Yep.
maybe we can have a conversation and feel free to come back for
Okay.
for updates on those and maybe we can find some other way for the community to, to help the kids. Which, you know, every year we talk about, I don't know how successful we do it. I'm, you know, I'm not sure that we are. But it may be one opportunity for us to bring the community together.
Mm-hmm.
Since, as you mentioned, they try to do things for the community.
Yeah.
So maybe there will be some reciprocity there.
Yeah, the um, the raffle calendar is gonna go out November twentieth and I'm gonna collect them before, so our goal was to get them out before Thanksgiving because family comes around. Family might want to buy it from them. And then um to collect it before Christmas and the drawing starts in January. So that was our goal. Um, so they have over a, a little over a month or around a month to sell as many as they can. And um they could even be, you know, I don't know how people feel about it, but they could even be like Christmas presents because your name gets drawn every day. Like your name goes back in. It's not like you, you get pulled once and that's it, you're done. So you can buy as many as you want of them and your name will get pulled. And we don't discriminate, like, oh, well, they already run one, put their name back and, you know, pull another one. It's whatever is pulled that day. So, yeah. So that will give people incentive to buy two, more than one, so to speak. Because if they can only win once, then they're gonna be like, oh, well, I don't want to buy one. You know, because
Yeah, yeah.
you pull my name once and I'm out.
Right.
So, yeah.
So I think what I'm hearing is that we're, we're good. Um, uh, you go, I don't know if we vote on these things.
Nope, it was just an update.
Uh, because we vote on the initial
The approval, yep.
Thank you for, for all that you're doing and hopefully we have even more participation. Keep us updated, but yes, you can, you can go ahead with your plans.
Okay. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much, Crystal. And you said we're gonna have more of those sweatshirts, right?
Yes, I will put another, I told them that parents can get them.
Actually, I, I like that one.
Can you turn around?
I was wearing her T-shirt and it looks very nice.
I get any parents order any, I was surprised.
Yeah.
And siblings want it now too.
Well, you may want to just pose for the cameras, so maybe everybody would uh would buy one. I liked it immensely with DIT.
Yeah, I thought it came out really nice. They did, they designed it themselves. It came out really nice.
It's very nice.
And they're the fiftieth class to go through, so that's why, you know, they wanted to put, even after fifty years, they wanted something on there. So, yeah.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Uh, next we have East Meadow Student Activities Checking Account.
Yes, um, so we were notified by Steve Nally, the town treasurer, that um with the retirement of our sixth grade teacher, Mrs. Yikes.
Coulson?
Yes, thank you, Trish Coulson, thank you, thank you. Um, who was the advisor and was a signature on the account um that we needed to vote Scott Taylor as the new uh signature on the account.
Okay. Do we need to vote or?
Yes, it's a, yep.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve Scott Taylor as the secretary on the checking account for East Meadow School?
Student activities.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Awesome. Great, it's always the same folks tonight. Alright, any questions? You guys have? No, all in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Cheryl. Um, discussion on enrollment figures.
Yes, so in your um folder is several um backup documentation, but um in general, there's an overview of enrollment.
You want to go to that first?
Sure. Okay, so as of October first, uh which is the date that we submit uh to the state enrollment, uh the Granby Public Schools has seven hundred and one students, which includes thirty students that are currently enrolled in our pre-K program. At the same time last year, uh Granby Public Schools had enrolled seven hundred and fifty-one students, uh which included twenty-four pre-K students. Uh, currently there are two hundred and twelve students enrolled at West Street School. There are a hundred and forty-eight students enrolled at East Meadow School and currently two hundred and ninety-eight students enrolled at Granby Junior Senior High School. Um, so what I did is created a chart for you, uh which compared sixteen to seventeen um and then the delta uh between the school years. So for school choice incoming in two thousand and sixteen, there were ninety-six students uh with the largest grade, which was grade twelve, which had fourteen school choice students enrolled. Obviously, they graduated last year. So um while we opened and added uh five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, while we added fourteen uh school choice students back into the district, it simply uh made up for the fourteen that left. Um, and then we had some, uh also some students that uh left the district uh like our Granby residents during transition years. Typically, your seventh grade, your eighth grade or your ninth grade. Um, uh sometimes just going back to their home district for high school or choosing private school, charter or vocational. Uh, so um school choice outgoing, these are our families who are choosing um other districts, uh public school districts besides Granby. Um, in two thousand and sixteen, there were fifty-four students uh or families that students students, I can't say families, there weren't fifty-four families, but there might be a family of more than one student. Um, but there were fifty-four students who chose uh a different public school system. This year there are fifty-two. Um, we are hoping that that trend continues. Uh, you have heard me say a thousand times, there's no better choice than Granby Public Schools and I firmly believe that. Our charter school, and we've been waiting for this number and I do apologize, uh the charter school numbers are not out yet. Um, so that is your Chinese Immersion School, which um as you notice in two thousand and sixteen, uh Pioneer Valley Performing Arts School is also in that number. So we had four students that were enrolled in that program and thirteen students in two thousand and sixteen were enrolled in the Chinese Immersion and we just don't have those numbers yet.
But that, that the seven oh one is fixed for now? We know that those are in our district?
Yes.
So where is that, where is that fifty student difference or is that coming from?
Uh, it's coming in declining enrollment in general, declining population. Um, it's uh, you know, it's hard to explain. Uh, we're not the only district that's facing it.
So fourteen of them from uh, no, not really. Oh, yeah, the incoming, school choice incoming went down by fourteen. But two fewer on the outgoing side, so that's twelve net, I guess? Is that the way we look at it? Yeah.
That's how I would look at it, yep.
Um.
Too short, vocational smaller, ten net.
And the other thing too is to look at, people just move, you know?
Yeah.
People that have moved out of district, uh moved to different states. Um, so moved to the eastern part of the state where they feel there's maybe more opportunity. Um, you know, we can certainly do a deeper dive into that enrollment data to find out, you know, who those students are and, and where they're going. Um, the vocational numbers, um, it was twenty-one in two thousand and sixteen. Um, and I did have to add one that I had neglected to tell Kathy. Uh, we have the vocational student going to Smith. Um, but the remainder of the students are going uh to Pathfinder. Um, and then the private school tuitions are, are down. Uh, that's a good sign, uh from seventy students to sixty-five. So um that private school number is astounding.
I just have a question. Um, school choice outgoing.
Mm-hmm.
And I know it's a small number, but it jumps out at, at third grade, from one to four.
Yep.
Which just seems that's kind of a strange year to.
Well, when you're looking at that number, what you really have to do is look at the diagonal because the year before they were second graders.
Yeah.
And so the following year, they are third graders. So in two thousand and sixteen, the second grade number is four. And then in two thousand and seventeen, in third grade, it's four. So those students, once they enroll in a school choice in another public district state. So they didn't come, they didn't come home, which is what we're hoping they will do.
Seven to eight, eight to nine.
Okay.
Seven to eight, eight to nine, eight to nine, you see most of the difference. And that's not really that dramatic, but you see uh one increase seven to eight and then three increase from eight to nine.
Mm-hmm.
And then almost everybody else remained the way they were. So we're not really able to pull some of those uh students back. Um, on the private school side, I don't know whether this is too much reading into it, except for the current junior class. It looks like eventually that thing, that those numbers may level off and we may not have as many students uh going to private schools. Looks like the numbers are dramatically lower, uh below, let me see, what, uh tenth grade?
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yep.
So if that's, if that turns out to be the story, then, you know, that's something
Yes, and we're, you know, we're trying to look for some patterns here. Um, what you're seeing is a large, is an increase in the West Street School population, which um is hopeful in that what we've been talking about in terms of enrollment and the new elementary school being a draw, that we may be able to fully enroll that elementary school, um, which will have a revenue impact for us. Um, and then also, you know, working very hard with our middle school um transition from elementary to middle school and middle school to high school, uh to have students become very comfortable with uh that transition and what their options are and, and the great work that's happening at both the middle school and the high school in terms of course offerings and, you know, the fact that we have the AP coursework that we do, the students are successful, um, that we have all of the extracurricular activities that we do. Um, the service, uh, you know, you heard Mr. Griffin here last time talking about trying to expand the service part of uh his school. Um, well, we already have it. You know, the kids here do tremendous community service, uh learning. And so, you know, my hope is that we're able to uh do a better job of communicating that great work to families so that um they're not faced with what they consider to be a better choice.
Good, I'm just going, I'm just going back to that second grade thing, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Um, just because I, I just have a couple of thoughts.
Yeah.
I'm sure that
Yep.
I got, um, second grade was gonna be tight this year until we had those eight.
Yeah.
Could that have been part of the reason historically why in second grade, last year there was more kids choice now? Because it would be, the class sizes were, were going from the three in first grade to the two in second grade?
Yep, we, we did field some phone calls about um class size. Um, unfortunately, I think again, it's a mison, misrepresentation. You know, our surrounding uh schools have similar class size. Um, you know, Granby had been very fortunate to have class sizes of sixteen, seventeen. Um, and when the budget uh, you know, came through, we did have to make a choice um and go to a more um, a class size that was more relative to what um our surrounding communities were doing. Um, but when we got seven kids in, I mean, we had to open up that third classroom, so the class sizes are, you know, seventeen and eighteen, so.
Well, I just know my personal experience outside the school committee was there was a lot of anxiety about
There's a lot of anxiety, yep.
For, for first grade, the second grade and the class sizes were going to get so much bigger.
Yep. Yep.
So overall.
But I will tell you, if you look at the class sizes in our surrounding districts, they're at twenty, twenty-one. Because I, I, you know, I did the survey, I spoke to the superintendents, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three was average.
So looking at these numbers and combined with the other file that we did not look at yet, at yet, um between Belcher Town and South Hadley, we have forty-five students from Granby going to those two districts, out of the fifty-two that we have uh doing school choice outgoing. So only seven go somewhere else, but uh those numbers used to be much higher, and let's say, you know, students used to go to Chicopee, some other school districts to be able to play sports, this and that, because we're doing something, I guess. But I would, I would be curious what we can do to really now focus on those two school districts that are receiving our students?
Yep.
And what is, what are really the driving factors?
So it's not supposed to be, um but there are some um conversations happening about uh particularly with South Hadley and hockey, uh the fact that um students that are school choicing into South Hadley are not paying the full cost of uh hockey, um and so that's forcing parents to make um an economic decision, uh which really isn't part, or is not supposed to be part of the process, but you know, it is, and and so that's something that I've been talking with uh the athletic director, Ally, about, um whether there's a way to fundraise um and uh meet that um extracurricular uh expense.
What is the difference?
Um, I'm not sure, so um I will get that number for you, um but it has been part of our discussion whether um, you know, through our uh, through our partnerships with um other towns, um that that, you know, we're creating an economic disadvantage for our students.
So without the charter schools, between the outgoing school choice and private schools, we have a hundred and seventeen students. So when you add the other ones, probably, let's assume they remain the same, it's a hundred and thirty-five, and vocational, you add another twenty or so, a hundred and fifty-plus students are out there. But three districts, Belcher Town, well, three schools, Belcher Town, South Hadley, and McDuffie, account for um ninety, ninety?
Ninety-six.
Was, uh forty-five, or ninety?
Ninety.
Forty-nine students this year.
Mm-hmm.
Huge amount.
Yes.
So we had this conversation last time, uh Steve was here. Uh, th- there is, there is a major uh lack of balance there, and that's, you know, that's it. Everyone uh is free to make their choices, and we respect that. I'm just trying to understand from our perspective, what are the opportunities for us to really focus on those things that are driving uh students to those schools?
Right.
Some things we can do something about, others uh may not be, but I would like to find out what we can influence.
One of the things we hear often is the uncertainty um in the programming, um that's directly related to budget. So every year that, you know, we're faced with the kinds of deficits, um because of the funding formula that Granby is using, um that creates uh instability in the district in how we're able to communicate what is going to be offered for the next school year. And that's, I think, when parents uh begin to reconsider uh other options for their children. I think that's a huge driving factor in people making a decision, um that if the programming and the resources were stabilized and consistent, um and that the programs, like extracurricular activities, all of the co-curricular clubs that we offer, if they knew those were gonna be consistently offered, I don't think that they would be looking at other schools the way, other school districts the way they do. I think that's a huge piece.
All right, are we gonna talk about the other file as well? Is there anything you want to?
Uh, I did the overview, I think, um the other files really are just the backup documentation for it, um so. I guess my question to you would be, uh this is seventeen and sixteen, we have this data all the way back to oh one? At least ten, two, two thousand and ten.
Yeah.
Would you like me to populate the table with all of those years so that you can get uh uh an idea of the trends in in the enrollment? I would be happy to. I just did the first two years.
Yeah.
But that information is there.
Yeah, it would be interesting.
Yep. So we're still, we're still, we still seem to be suffering from, so on, but I I gotta tell you, I mean, you know, as we're having this conversation, I'm thinking, maybe part of our, you know, one constant item on our agenda should be recognition and celebration.
Mm-hmm. We talked about that at the MASC trip, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I mean, we we do it at work, I mean, every morning, people stay there, recognize someone, celebrate some success story or stuff like that, and and, you know, people who were major uh skeptics of uh recognition and celebration, they did not wanna talk about, you know, things like that, it was too personal, too, too much. Now they enjoy it because that is one uh a morale booster for a lot of people, but also it shows everybody else, what are we learning from each other?
Right.
What is really working well? Can we uh support each other? Can we just borrow that uh approach and do something better in our classroom, in our um department? So maybe we should start doing that. I'll give you the example, which is funny, I don't know what they did, I did not really go back and check, but last time, um uh Mike asked, we had a student who was at T L, and we started talking about other universities where the students are. Same acapella group was at McDuffie's. The day after, they had videos and pictures and all that as part of how they were promoting their, you know, the the fact that they were attracting, we had nothing. So we're not really taking advantage of some promotional opportunities uh to show that, you know, the grant, the great, uh grass may seem green here, but you know, we're, we're trying to provide the same things.
Doing the same things when you start talking about it.
Exactly, so. Anything on the enrollment figures, uh you know, uh I'm sure Dan would have had a lot of questions.
Is there, is there a way we can get, and I know there's a lot of, you know, on you and the staff, but um when you're seeing people choice out, and I, you've probably already asked him, is there a way we can really populate that data and really get fine-tuned exactly what we're looking at?
Yep.
It would be helpful if we knew why people are making those choices, whether they're just moving, or whether it's because they work there, or you know what I mean?
Right.
That would make a big difference, I think, if we knew why.
You know, and I, I think it's important to understand, you know, comparison data is important, it it shows, I think, um, not that we wanna be like anybody else, but I do think it's important to look and see are other districts proportionally losing the same kinds of numbers of students that we are. And if not, what are they doing uh in terms of, you know, um to your point, um is it more about um celebrating the good work that's happening here? Is it more about being more articulate about the programming that we're offering, you know, for students, uh for parents not to know that we don't have AP Computer Science, you know, um that we actually do have AP Computer Science, many students participated, they built apps, they, you know, they took the exam. That's disheartening, uh to hear that they're going somewhere where they think there's a better opportunity when we're offering the same thing.
Yeah, some of the stuff, um you know, just knowing, you know, maybe they left with a band, and there's not a whole lot of opportunity for us to do something about a band, which is not large enough, right?
Right. Well, and you know, part of it is, we have, we have families who school choice in, and then school choice back out, um you know, to their high school because of that, you know, they just get to the point where they feel like the art program doesn't support their child's need. Certainly, I understand that, you know, we can't be all to everyone. What we do have is an excellent academic, social-emotional, extracurricular, co-curricular program. So, um but if your child's having that niche, uh and wants that niche experience, then you know, I I do believe that, you know, there should be an opportunity for choice for those students, but otherwise, we we offer an incredible program here.
Yeah. The, a small number, but the one thing that may be a sign of things to come because of the new school, kindergarten, we had nothing last year, we have five this year.
We could have had much more, need I remind you?
Yes.
That if we had been able to open up, we had, I think, five students um on the wait list, um but, you know, um again, a budgetary decision that, you know, you can't.
Yeah.
You know, that's a difficult one, because we could be growing enrollment at a faster pace, um if we had the resources.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Going to old business?
Old business?
Did we?
No, um I need to table that. I I neglected to get the uh results in your folder.
How are they overall?
Good.
Good?
Good. Um, there's uh, there's some discussion that needs to happen about the change in test and all of that too, so.
When we say MCAS, are we, uh, MCAS two-point-oh, or are we talking about?
It's what they took last year, yeah, they took a combination last year, some were online, some were parks, some were MCAS, so it's, it's a little muddied right now, but as of two-point-oh, it should realign and re-straighten itself.
Which is why parents are very.
Yeah, very, I know, I've been following on Facebook.
So when you guys come, uh uh, when you come back, yes, or I don't know who was gonna present it, could you re-educate us?
Sure.
Because MCAS Park, and then MCAS two-point-oh, and then combination of all those overlapping, uh it it did get confusing.
Yes, I can't tell you how many um web Xs we've been on to try and have Desi explain, you know, what the changes have been and the impact and the scores and the results, so.
Yeah.
It's very confusing, it's a very difficult time for parents, um as, you know, they've been, you know, following certain scores for their kids, and then all of a sudden, it's a completely different score, it's a completely different rating system, um so we will take the time to, um at the next, uh to go over what those changes are.
All right, now moving to old business, to strategic plan and review.
Yes, so that's exciting, um we've had our second meeting, um and uh we've worked on mission and vision.
We started working on that.
We started, no, we worked on it.
Oh, we didn't work on it?
It's probably a longer process, it's always the case, it's always a longer process than I think it's going to be, but it's a very good process. So I would encourage anyone in the community, um if you have ideas around uh things that could be improved in the district, things that um are opportunities for growth for the district, um please get in touch with any one of the strategic planning uh committee members, and we're open to that discussion. We talked about uh not only mission and vision, but we did talk, start to begin to discuss what some of the strategies could be uh towards improvement, so we're into the process, and are we traveling, are we not traveling? It was kinda dependent on.
Traveling.
You.
Do we still have an opportunity to call a meeting for that first day?
I'm gonna check today, yeah.
All right.
I mean, tomorrow, first day, yeah.
If the majority uh wanted to be, do you remember what day, what day that was?
The fifteenth or the the twenty-second, actually, 'cause I didn't do the fifteenth, 'cause I didn't think he would be here.
He was gonna be due twenty-second?
I believe so.
That's the day before Thanksgiving, isn't it?
Well, the tw- Yeah.
Or, yeah.
With the two days before, but it's a half-day for us, the twenty-third.
Yeah, well, if people said they can, then they can.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, it was a good conversation, in fact, some of these things that we're talking about. Folks are uh creative, they have good ideas, but they're fired up too. Uh, we have a good group that is really uh into uh changing, changing the direction of our district.
And we had students.
And we had students.
We had students, and that's fabulous.
We may have more.
And we will have more.
Yeah.
Um, so that's exciting, and actually, this is non-judgmental at all. We could've gotten a lot farther without the students, but thank God the students were there, because they slowed us down and reminded us that everything we discuss and think and decide has an impact on them, and they're very articulate about what that impact is. So they were very clear about um some of the things that are working well in the district, and some of the things that they feel need to be reconsidered. And so it's exciting to have them on board and to bring them into the, into the conversation.
Yeah. And and their uh, their words are already in the, some of their words are in the uh vision and vision.
Yep.
So, it was good to have them. And thank you for doing that, for engaging them very quickly. Anything on the strategic plan?
Uh, no.
Okay. FY seventeen?
Uh, he'll be here the sixteenth.
Same thing with the eighteenth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're gonna lean on the budget.
Yep.
Uh, the one thing that I just uh should add is that uh Cheryl followed up on our request to the finance committee for uh the unanticipated uh expenses on special education and the student going to Smith Vocational.
Mm-hmm.
And that on the positive side, we had seven new students coming to second grade, so we had to open a third classroom, uh so we have a new teacher uh for that, and um so all those expenses were submitted as a request. We have some understanding as to what the response is gonna be, but we did not receive an official response yet, so I followed up, and I sent a message um this weekend, sometime yesterday, maybe four, whatever it was. So hopefully, next time, we would have an official response, which will help us one way or another, just, you know, it's just gonna help us really better understand two things, one is what are the options that we have in front of us to be able to fund, because those are especially special education and uh special education tuition and vocational school tuition are mandated, we cannot do anything about it. And on top of that, it looks like there is still a lot of ambiguity around some of the limitations around fund transfers, even though our meeting last year, or earlier this year, uh with the finance committee led us to believe that it was a process that was fairly uh clean, that we were submitting up to this certain amount, and then they were gonna let us know this or another. Looks like we're talking about uh per-item limitations now, and the amount that they uh shared, I don't remember the exact magnitude, special education doesn't fit in that type of, you know, single-digit, few-thousand-dollar limit per item amount, so, uh so it's a good conversation to have, hopefully, when we hear from them, I just wanted to bring everybody up to date on that. Um, going to policy, nursing coverage for field trips?
Uh, so, um, one of the things that uh Nancy Jenks, the nurse leader, uh has brought to our attention, um is the need for students to have current written uh medication orders, um written parent consent, um and updated medication and supplies uh submitted with a medical plan when students are going on a field trip. And that we, as the school district, uh need to be doing a better job of helping parents understand that requirement, um but then also us communicating what will happen if there is an emergency um during the field trip. So this is a field trip policy revision, um that will um take care of those, uh both of those issues. It has more detail than your current uh field trip policy. And this, I think, comes out of uh what we're seeing in terms of increased medical interventions needed for students, um and uh the nurses want to be sure that they have clear communication from the parent, uh the physician, as to uh what needs to be done uh for students, and that they're communicating clearly what they will do, um should there be a medical need.
So are these uh updates to an, to our existing?
Mm-hmm. It's a rewritten policy, um we did work with Ginny Tate, uh the sped, special education attorney, uh that we work with through Carol's office, um and so this was vetted uh through her.
So this is not something that can be aligned with MASC, this is not a?
Right.
Okay.
On this, our, like that first paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that just gonna be like a line item on a permission slip?
Correct.
That if you need X, then you have to get in touch with so-and-so?
Mm-hmm.
'Cause that could be a very cumbersome thing.
Right, right, so right now, the permission field trip request just has a checkbox for is this, has the nurse been made aware? That permission uh field trip per, request form will be changed to include, um you know, have you notified, are you aware of all students that may need medical attention um during the trip, and are we able to provide coverage? So, you know, uh we're a district that um, our nurses um do a fantastic job with our students, um but we don't have extra hands on deck uh to send on a field trip, so we are having to hire agency nurses to either come in and cover a clinic so that a nurse that knows the student can go, uh we do have some substitute nurses that we've hired for the district, so that they get a feel for our students and can go on field trips, um but at the end of the day, um if a nurse is unavailable, then the trip will not go. And that unfortunately- And that unfortunately can happen right up to, you know, you get the call that the nurse is sick. And that's, uh, we need to make families aware of that. And it's not to be punitive in any manner, it is so that students are provided the opportunity to go and the care if they need it, so.
I, I was just afraid that extra paperwork around this, some student forgets it, it's just another.
Yeah. Our nurses are really good about following up with families. I think what this does do, however, is some of our families that do struggle to get written medical orders updated, it helps us have the conversation with them about why it's so important, you know, to be two hours away from primary care and not have correct orders. You know, that it's a, it is, you know, to be completely transparent, this is a way to help our families maintain their connection to their providers so that their children are, so that the medication orders are current. And, and some of our families do struggle with that, so this is a way to help them.
So, are we gonna see this when they update the policy and then the form?
Uh, that's a good question. I maybe would anticipate this could be a first read and then I can bring the former policy, I believe, uploaded.
And that's fine, but because we need to vote on the policy itself, these are revisions to it, then, you know, how the, it's in the overall.
Sure, I will do that.
Okay. This is good, I like how, I don't know if Nancy did this, this one, but I like how it is clear what the changes are that we could follow.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions on that policy? Do you have extending reports? Do you have?
I do, and it's in there. Uh, I was thrilled to attend the joint MAS-C, MAS-S conference this past week with school committee members Jen Curran and Marie McCourt. Did I spell your name right? I'm not sure, oh, I did? Okay. I was gonna spell-check it and I forgot. Uh, notable presentations in this does not cover half of what we saw. Included global STEM initiatives. North Hampton actually has a middle school and an elementary school STEM initiative with global partners that we will be investigating. Transforming School Accountability, opioid addiction and legalized marijuana in context of the effects on adolescent brain development. And Understanding Education in the Fourth Industrial Revolution. If you haven't heard the term Fourth Industrial Revolution, Google it, it is.
What they call four-point-oh.
Amazing, the things that are happening that, you know, I, I am clueless to but need to really get caught up to speed on because it's going to change and is changing education as we know it.
I'm just wondering why everything now goes by software.
I know, four-point-oh, I know. Well, there's a brief history, the first industrial, the second, the third, and the fourth. Uh, I won't even try, I will try next time to go through which of the phases there.
That we'll be expecting.
Okay. So, I won't misspeak then and I'll bring it up next time. Let's see, uh. Um, the United States has taken a significant lead in the development of new technologies and particularly Massachusetts in biotech and nanotech and the combination of biotech and nanotech. So, the examples they're giving are micro, nanoscopic conductors that can be embedded onto very malleable products we can't even see, but that would be able to be inserted into the human body to monitor and to actually totally upend surgery and how we are repairing the human body. And all of that is actually being developed in Massachusetts, which is crazy.
Well, even in our area.
In our area, yeah.
And but, um, years ago, they decided to make a lot of investments in UMass for biotech and this area is, is really ripe for a lot of stuff, it's just that we don't have, we don't have the way to accommodate businesses.
Right. So, workforce development, so speaking with North Hampton and some of our other surrounding neighbors, how are we getting ahead of the curve? But how are we preparing our students for a job force, for their workforce? We don't know what those careers are gonna be, but we're primed for the area where the technology is being developed. So, the skills aren't necessarily content and knowledge, they are more about, and it's here, but it's more about collaboration, effective communication, problem-solving, creativity, being able to work in, in asynchronous environment, have a conversation online through Skype and problem-solving in those areas and particularly global cultural competencies. How are we helping our Granby students develop all of that when, unfortunately, our technology is donated and our infrastructure at the Granby Junior/Senior High School, we all know needs to be updated? You know, there are some significant issues that we need to address in creating the, the, the instruction that students are going to need in the next ten years. And I'm excited for students, I'm excited for staff, but it is going to take an investment and some vision and some partnerships with our local community to get those realized here, not only here in Granby, but for us in the area so that we are able to not only educate but employ. 'Cause at the end of the day, if there's not a job here, we're gonna educate and students are gonna leave for where the jobs are, so.
But I think this, this is, this is the right way of looking at it. You know that I always bring up this, you know, what is career and college readiness thing? And when we translate career apart, it always, almost always, there is some, some tangible perfection at the end. But when you do this, I mean, if the, if the student wants to, or eventually would want to become a doctor, nurse, engineer, carpenter, whatever it is, right, a police officer.
Right.
If we can base our education on these factors, they will find what is right for them. As opposed to, I was trying to say, hey, these are only the three, four programs open to you and just now you should go and get into it. At the age of sixteen, seventeen, making a decision for so far down, down the road, it, it really sometimes puts them, locks them on a path that later on, they don't know how to switch out of.
And, you know, at the end of the day, I, you know, I think it was Mr. Daggett that said, if you can write an algorithm for it, then the job associated with it will not be necessary in the future. Driverless cars, we watched a video of a bricklayer that was completely robotic, a house being built with a 3D printer. So, this idea that, you know, I'm gonna inherit my dad's construction company or the local repair shop, I get it, that's, that is a fabulous goal, but in ten years, what happens if that's not, if that company doesn't have the work? How have you changed the company so that it does have the work? How have you grown the company so that it has the robotics, so that it has the 3D printer? Is, is that what we're creating here for our students in Granby? Is, is the ability to problem-solve, to think creatively so that they are not outsourced? So that the work is here for them? And again, it isn't, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, if you're gonna be working in construction or carpentry, there's no differentiation for me, it's all, you know, it's all great work, great careers. And at the end of the day, that's, you know, what we want for our students, is to be successful.
Right.
Be happy, to be civically-minded and participatory in their town and local government, 'cause that is what will sustain them, I believe, you know, for their entire lives.
But that also goes into continuous education, right? Um, again, when we read many of these things, it's like, oh, you know, when you're young, we have to do something about it and we're gonna teach you all these things and you're gonna find the right way almost immediately. But continuous education is that, you know?
Right.
Things will change, we know that they will change. Things that I did not foresee myself doing, I ended up doing and I'm still learning new things. And that's, that's, that's the mindset we really have to instill in, you know, in, in everyone, our students, so that they want to learn new things, they want to do different things. They don't see themselves as, you know, one and done, I learned this trade and then I'm done for good. Then, what this gentleman, you know, says, absolutely true. Jobs become obsolete or, you know, they can be automated sometimes. They don't, they don't make as much money as, you know, you thought when you were planning for it, you could make. So, that, those are different ways of looking at it.
And I think that, you know, the great example he gave was in Schenectady, New York, his hometown, his street, you know, associated with a big engineering firm, design, took two years to bring design to product. And this year, they laid off eight engineers because designed a product takes two days because an algorithm is written, so that they are doing the trials basically in the cloud. And so, you know, all, everything, that, and that's the big idea with Fourth Industrial Revolution is that everything is changing so rapidly because technology is becoming so powerful that it can do the work of, you know, not only a human, but a group of humans and the problem-solving that they're able to do. And so, that's why getting kids to, the ability to work together, to problem-solve is gonna be, you know, really crucial to their success.
So, I think it's really about transferable skill, right? My father's generation, people work the same job from the day they got out of school, the day they retired.
Mm-hmm.
My generation, I think they're claiming changes careers three times over their life, right?
Yes, yep.
What, what are the kids' lives gonna be like?
Right. Right. Yep. So, that's my wonderful update. Think I got it all in there, yeah?
Thank you.
You're welcome. It, it can be a little scary, I have to say, it's a little overwhelming, but it's really exciting if you can get by the fact that we have to think differently about what is going to be available to us in, in the near future. I mean, it's already here in pockets, but it is going to become commonplace, so how are we ready for it?
Yeah, it's amazing that years ago, when I started grad school, artificial intelligence was a big thing. People were talking about artificial intelligence and stuff. And it just cooled off, it just became part of the conversation. Now, recently, you can't read something that doesn't include artificial intelligence, AI this, AI that.
Big data, deep data.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Internet of Things and nothing.
Mm-hmm.
So, it just, it, it comes around, but you're right that it gets scary and it should not be scary.
Right.
Because it would make it scary that, you know, as of tomorrow, there will be no drivers, there will be, you know, no cars. We've been talking about those floating vehicles since we were kids, so.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
What, there's a student that walks by me every day at dismissal and was wearing a Doctor Who shirt and I, I immediately thought, when she walked by the other day, I'm like, ooh, teleporting, that could be a real thing. But, I mean, it, it's exciting and, you know, I, I know it is, it, it, when you first hear it, it's sort of like, you know, a million, 1.2 million truck drivers, I believe, in the United States out of work in the next decade. What is that really going to mean? You know, what is it that we as educators are, are trying to create?
Yeah, that means a lot of scared people on their own.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything from the collaborative?
Uh, no, our next meeting's the fifteenth, so.
Thank you for forwarding that bulletin. And we can maybe follow up on that and see if it's applicable to us.
Yes, yep.
The grant maybe, we'll see. West Street Building Committee is meeting next week, maybe?
Next week.
Next week.
It, it pushed it out a week and I can't remember why, 'cause they wanted to wait and have a little bit more information on something.
And then policies of committee, we did not meet since last time. And we're gonna get together, but we actually, actually, we did meet.
We did, so.
And we've made a lot of progress.
We have, we have, we have section C complete in a final draft. I had sent it to you and Jen, but I did move it into the folder. B, E, and F are complete in terms of the comparison. And thank you to Annabelle, who's not here, she's the admin intern, which has been fabulous. So, she'll be taking those documents and making the final draft. So, we're doing a lot of really good work, so thank you to the committee and we'll have most of them ready for review, hopefully, by the end of November.
So, when are we gonna start?
It's a good question. Do you want the whole committee to see the comparison or do you want them just to see the final?
Final.
Just the final?
Yeah, so they can.
Okay.
Can we make both of them available?
Well, I can put both of them in the folder.
Yes.
And the, and the final would be what we vote on.
Yeah. 'Cause what we're looking at, which has been extremely helpful, we have the old policy and, well, actually, we have our old policy and next to it, we have what Massachusetts Association of School Committees is recommending. And we're able to see where we have differences, where we have some things that are like a novel long and you can't even understand what it's saying. And there are some areas where we have some, well, they have something and we don't, so we can directly pull it into ours. But it allows us to read so quickly and we're really reading through a lot. And I had not, I, I had not digested policies that way the last five years that I've been in this committee. That, those readings are allowing me to go through the entire thing and understand what we're talking about. I can even remember what topics were in which section type of thing. So, until I forget it. Uh, but it was, it's very helpful, it may help the committee as well to just see what we moved, what we changed and why and how they compare. And then we vote on the.
The final.
Uh, the, the updated version already, because this one will approve and, and sort of issue. Okay. I think that's it for our open session this evening. Um, do we have a meeting in November? Another meeting?
For school committee?
For school committee, because I'm not sure that.
The twentieth?
Twentieth, right, okay. I did not know whether we called it or we, okay. Good. So, twentieth is our next meeting. So, with that, our open session will conclude and we're gonna vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, Part A Three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so, an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Committee of roll call, please.
Marie McCourt, aye.
Emery Urban, aye.
Maxson, aye.
Thank you.